Good evening councillors and members of the public. Before we commence the meeting, I'd like to draw your attention to the fire regulations, which are displayed behind me and on the screen over there. Also, please, can you ensure your mobile phones are switched to silent or off? And councillors, can I remind you to speak directly into the microphone? Make sure your cards are pushed firmly into the console. This meeting is being webcast. Members of the public, I'd say that as a committee, we understand that the matter under consideration tonight is an emotive one. While this is a meeting in public, it's not a public meeting. And therefore, I would ask you to respect those around you in the public gallery and the committee, and refrain from any booing, cheering, or any other form of disturbance. Tonight's application is a public speaking item, and those of you nominated to speak in support or objection will be given five minutes each to do so after the planning officer's presentation. So now, let's move on to the main business of the day. The minutes of the meeting on the first of July have been laid on the table for the last half an hour. Is it your wish that I sign them as a true record of that meeting? Thank you. I'll do so at the end of the meeting. Item two, apologies. Please Fiona.
Thank you, Chairman. I've had apologies from councillors Carol Coburn, Mary Foragevsky, Pat Frost, Michael Goodridge, Christian Hesser, Anna James, Stephen Mulliner, Chris Storey, and Liz Wheatley. And this evening, we have councillors Val Henry, Jim Edwards, Julia Potts, and Jenny Else as substitutes.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the substitution. You can tell it's holiday time, can't you? Three, item three, Fiona, disclosure of interest?
None specifically, Chairman.
Members, nothing further? Thank you. Four, questions by members of the public. Fiona?
None, Chairman.
In fact, then, let's move on to the planning application, WA 2014 0391. Land at Lower Webber Road, Badshot Lee. And I do invite Elizabeth Sims to introduce the matter, and then Catherine. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chairman, and good evening, members. By way of introduction, I just wanted to make a few key points in relation to this application. I'll then pass over to Catherine, the case officer, to take members through the determining issues and the plans. Firstly, this is clearly a further application for housing development on a greenfield site to come before the joint planning committee. There have, of course, been a number in recent months. Officers do recognise the strong concerns raised by local residents, and we have considered all representations and matters in support as well, very carefully. An important point here is that the current application is a full and detailed application. Many of the applications that have come before you in recent months, of course, have been in outline form, where you've just been looking at the principle and perhaps one or two single matters. But tonight, it is the principle and the full detail of the scheme that members are considering. And a second point is to remind members of the government's policy in relation to housing development, as expressed in the National Planning Policy Framework. You'll be aware that paragraph fifty of the framework requires local planning authorities to plan for a mix of housing and to plan to meet housing need. The current scheme would clearly provide forty percent affordable housing, which is a clear benefit of the scheme, to be balanced, of course, against any planning objections that you may raise. The site is located within the countryside beyond the Green Belt. Following paragraph forty-nine of the framework, policies for the supply of housing should not be considered up-to-date if the local planning authority cannot demonstrate a five-year supply of deliverable housing sites. Now, as members are aware, the council cannot currently demonstrate a five-year supply of housing, and so far as housing applications are concerned, and insofar as policy C2 is a housing supply policy, it must be considered out-of-date. However, it is still a judgment for members as to whether the development of the site would be harmful to the intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside, in terms of its size, form, design, and other considerations. And finally, as you'll see in the report, the assessment has triggered a number of technical assessments in relation to flood risk, highways, and the impact upon the SPA. Now, these matters have been a long discussion between the officers and the applicants, and this is why the application has taken quite a long time to actually reach you tonight. But in fairness to the applicants, they have sought, as far as they possibly can, to overcome these technical matters, and we would ask you to take that into consideration very carefully, as you consider your report and our presentation tonight. We are of the view that there are no reasonable objections to the proposal on these technical grounds, subject, of course, to legal agreements and conditions. So the key assessment for members, then, is whether there's any identified harm which would significantly and demonstrably outweigh any harm when assessed against the policies of the MPPF. So I hope that's helpful to members. I'm now going to pass over to Catherine to take members through the plans and the determining issues. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you, Chairman. As Elizabeth has mentioned, this is an application for full planning permission. That means that you must consider all the relevant planning matters before you, including access, layout, scale, appearance, and landscaping of the site. In brief, the proposal is for a hundred and forty dwellings, of which fifty-six, or forty per cent, would be affordable. The site would have an average density of twenty-nine point six dwellings per hectare. Vehicle access would be taken from Lower Webber Lane to the north of the application site, and there would be an emergency pedestrian-only access to Badshot Park at the south-eastern corner of the site. The development would deliver three hundred and sixteen parking spaces overall, and there would be play space and open space, including a leap and a lap. The key issues to consider this evening are, obviously, the government's advice to local planning authorities to boost significantly the supply of housing. Other matters to be considered include flood risk and drainage of the site, transport and sustainability issues, the impact of the development upon the character of the countryside and the strategic gap, the impact of the development on existing residential amenities, and the effect upon the Thames Basin Heathes SPA. I'll now just take you briefly through some plans and photographs of the site, just to put it into context for you. The application site is outlined here in red, situated adjacent to the mainline railway between Webber and Badshot Lee. The site is currently a green open field used for some informal paddocks, grazing, and other low-key activities. This is just an aerial photograph to show the site in context in relation to other development nearby. Here, to the east, we have the Glorne Mead development here at the north, and which is wrapped around by the Badshot Park residential development. On this side, there is ribbon development along Lower Webber Lane, heading towards Farnham, and obviously, this is the electricity substation here, the other side of the railway line. This is an extract from the Local Plan Proposals map. It's not particularly clear, but if you can see, the white areas here are the developed area boundaries, and there is another portion of developed area here. The site is effectively set between those two parts of the developed parts of Farnham, within the wider strategic gap. This is the proposed site layout for the plan. The plan, obviously, has been rotated slightly, so this is Lower Webber Lane that runs here, which runs in an east-to-west direction, and north is obviously in this direction here. This is the southern end of the site. The development would be located in a linear form along the main access road, wrapping round the corner here, and there would then be cluster development on the western portion of the site. This plan here is just to give you an indication of the distribution of affordable housing. Obviously, forty per cent of the dwellings would be affordable. It would be, in this area here, obviously, a variety and mix of different types of affordable dwellings, and there would be some further affordable housing sited here amongst the other market housing. The application, as I mentioned, is in full, and you are also considering the design, scale, height of the buildings proposed. I shan't take you through all of the elevations for all a hundred and forty homes, these are just to give you an indication of the design and style proposed. This section here is the main street scene elevation, along Lower Webber Lane. So here, on the left-hand side, is the Glorne Mead development, where it would adjoin, and on this side is the railway line. So this would be the main site access, which is located slightly further west than the existing field access that you drove into at the site visit. This is a section taken adjacent to the leap on the western boundary of the site. These properties do have accommodation within the roof, and there are the slightly taller properties proposed. Again, this is further along that section, also fronting on to the railway line there. And these are the dwellings at the southernmost end of the site. Obviously, this section reflecting, for those members that were on the site visit, the natural fall in the land across the site from east across to west. I'll just take you through a couple of photographs. This is a view of the site in the distance, looking from the railway bridge in Crown Lane, looking towards the north and Lower Webber Lane, along this band of trees here. And this is a view from Green Lane, which is further west. The railway line runs roughly in this position here. Obviously, you can see the overhead cables which cross the site, and the Badshot Park Glorne Mead developments in the background there. This is a view taken on-site of the existing dwellings in Badshot Park. And again, this is the site frontage. The main site access, as I've mentioned, would move slightly further west to where it is sited currently. Moving on, then, just to discuss briefly the key issues to be considered this evening. With regards to flooding, the applicant has undertaken modelling to demonstrate that the site lies wholly within the flood zone one. The application can therefore be said to be located in an area least at risk of flooding, and would pass the sequential requirements of the MPPF. Surface water is to be dealt with by way of underground attenuation tanks and the discharge controlled via a hydro break into the western ditch. Obviously, at the moment, greenfield runoff is not controlled into that ditch. Properties on-site would be set approximately a hundred and fifty millimetres above surrounding ground levels to prevent any flooding occurring from groundwater flooding. And foul drainage would be taken into the public sewer to be improved and updated by the developer to cope with the extra capacity required by this development. With regards to highways and access, as you can see, the development would generate additional traffic movements along Webber Lane. Junction analysis of key junctions locally have indicated that they would operate within capacity at peak periods, taking into account the additional traffic generated by the proposals. The development would deliver a number of contributions towards local highways infrastructure, including improvements to bus stops on the Badshot Lee Road and Webber Road, improvements to the local cycle network between Aldershot and Farnham, and the upgrading of local footpaths, footpath 102, which runs between Badshot Lee Road and St George's Road, and footpath 112, which runs between Green Lane and Moncton Lane. They would be improved to cycle track standards. In addition, the developers are proposing to install a new pedestrian phase at the Badshot Lee crossroads. At present, there are no controlled pedestrian crossings on this key crossroads, which is adjacent to, obviously, the church, the primary school, and is a key junction in the locality. This would be developed and delivered by the developer in conjunction with the County Highway Authority. Before I take you through the key determining issues, there are just a number of updates to note, referred to on your printed update sheet. Firstly, there is an amendment and an additional paragraph to note with regards to housing land supply, to be updated on page forty-one of your agenda. There have been a number of additional representations, a summary of which is given on that printed update sheet. The officers are of the view that the majority of those issues have already been covered within the main body of the report. As a result of the members' site visit on Monday, a number of points of clarification have been provided by the applicant's agent. With regards to the crossroads, which I've just referred you to, the pedestrian crossroads, the applicant's agent has clarified that the model based to work out traffic flow at that junction was based on a worst-case scenario, and it may lead to the junction operating at capacity. However, that's a highly unlikely scenario, given that the pedestrian cycle would only be engaged when pedestrians call the lights to work during key periods, so that is a worst-case scenario. The applicant has confirmed that a link would be possible and provided onto highway land in Badshot Park for the emergency access, and that they have already entered into discussions with the statutory electricity provider with regards to placing the overhead cables underground. Just a point of clarification with regards to issues raised regarding drainage swales. Apologies that the layout plan members were provided with on the site visit did show drainage swales above ground. These are not to be provided, that was an error on the plan. All the surface water drainage is to be stored in attenuation tanks below ground level, so there will be no surface water storage. The key matters to be considered by members this evening are, obviously, the principle of the development, issues of prematurity, and the lawful use of the land and loss of the existing agricultural land, housing land supply, access highways and parking, flood risk and drainage issues, air quality, archaeology, infrastructure, and the effect of the development upon the Thames Basin Heathes SPA. Members, you're being asked to exercise your judgement on a number of issues tonight, mainly the location of the development and its sustainability, the housing mix and density proposed, the provision of affordable housing, the impact of the development on the character of the countryside and the strategic gap, the general visual impact, layout, and design of this full planning application, the impact on existing residential amenity, and the provision of amenity and play space for future residents. The recommendation is therefore that, subject to completion of a section 106 agreement to secure forty per cent affordable housing, infrastructure contributions including secondary and early years education, environmental improvements, the setting up, sorry, off-site highways works, and for the setting up of a management company to manage on-site play space, open space, and SUDs, that permission be granted, subject to the conditions and informative set out in the agenda. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Catherine. Moving on now to public speaking, and I think you're all familiar with the procedure, you have five minutes each, and we start with Mr Watts.
Hello. That works. Good evening, I'm Cliff Watts from Badshot Lee Community Association. Firstly, the flood risk. The site is partly flood zone two. National Planning Policy Framework, Para 100, states that development areas at risk of flooding should be avoided by directing development away from areas at high risk. But where development is necessary, this development is not necessary. The hundreds of pages of flood risk assessment say it all. There is a problem here. Even now, they are still suggesting raised floor levels and an emergency access, just in case. Flooding here has been a constant and growing problem for many years. We should not and need not be gambling with this. Excuse me. Now, traffic. The site will result in around three hundred extra cars on our roads. They will need them. There is no shop or other amenities, and alternative transport is very, very poor. The traffic light upgrade will be of limited value and at best, an exercise in damage limitation. Highways have recently stated that the traffic lights are approaching maximum practical capacity at peak times. They have also stated in the past that if traffic is delayed for longer due to the newly installed pedestrian controls, drivers will tend to jump the lights. As they have pointed out, this will increase the danger for pedestrians, particularly those dropping off children at the school during peak times. The site is of poor design. It is overcrowded. Parking provision is to guidelines, but guidelines are a minimum standard. There is virtually no parking for visitors. We do not want minimum standards. Poor design and cramped roads have required an emergency access through the neighbouring development of Badshot Park, potentially creating an obvious rat run. Who would police this? I have lived on Badshot Park with one access and a similar number of houses as this site for thirty-eight years, without any access problems. This is a problem created by their own cram-it-in approach to this site. Planning is about quality as well as quantity. Localism. There was no meaningful consultation. It was a presentation. It was held outside the village and produced many adverse comments. The two biggest complaints were firstly, that they should not build there and join Badshot Lee to Webber, and secondly, the site is overdeveloped with a hundred and thirty-nine homes. Naturally, they completely ignored the first regarding location. As for the housing number, they raised it from a hundred and thirty-nine to a hundred and forty. It was not consultation. They told us what we were going to get, and nothing substantial was changed. They have completely gone against Para 66 of the MPPF, requiring working closely with those affected. Conversely, we have had a number of very useful meetings with the two other developers currently active in the village. Local opinion has made clear, this area is the least acceptable for development. It was clearly indicated in our two hundred responses we received from our village survey of January 2013, and is also clear from the three current applications before the council. One has twenty-five objections, one has thirty-nine objections, this has two hundred and forty-nine. Once again, the residents are indicating where they would most accept greenfield development. This is all, so this is reflected, in our sections of the Farnham Design Statement and the Neighbourhood Plan. However, we do not need to be arguing the legal status of our neighbourhood plan, as it is, where there is a consideration here. The village has indicated where we would reluctantly accept housing and where we would not, in exactly the spirit enshrined in the Localism Act and Para 183 of the MPPF. In summary, we do not need to be gambling with flood risk, we do not need to be gambling with pedestrian safety. Flood risk, pedestrian safety, and creating a rat run are not what is called for in the MPPF Para 64, clearly stating that applications like this should be refused. Badshot Lee cannot sustain the three hundred and ten new homes proposed by the current applications. We should accept the view of the majority of residents and steer development away from this area. We can afford to be more discerning about what we build and where we build it. This site is the most unwanted and unnecessary. There are better and more acceptable sites available. The scheme would be a blight on any village within the borough. Please do not allow it to spoil Badshot Lee.
Thank you very much, Mr Watts, and I apologise for the fact the clock wasn't working correctly. Turning now to the Farnham Town Council, councillor Ricketts.
Good evening. Farnham Town Council is grateful for the opportunity to speak at this meeting. Clearly, Badshot Lee is under great threat from development, and it is essential that each application is viewed in conjunction with the current proposals. The current SANGS provision of Farnham Park would be seriously diminished should this application be granted, and no further brownfield development would be able to proceed in the town as a result. This would include the wall mead, which is included in Waverley's calculation of sites within settlements. This, along with permissions and windfalls, form the eleven hundred figure quoted in last year's consultation. The inability to develop these brownfield sites within the settlement will put further pressure on greenfield sites in the borough to meet the five-year housing land supply. Most importantly, the Badshot Lee Community Association has taken part in consultation with Waverley and Farnham Town Council, in the formulation of the Farnham Design Statement and the emerging Farnham Neighbourhood Plan, and the new local plan. The community association also conducted a survey to establish the views of local residents. Residents are not seeking to refuse development in Badshot Lee, but they are providing their views in order that the housing need is met on appropriate sites. This would ultimately result in sustainable development that doesn't harm the character of the area, and adversely affect the local traffic and infrastructure issues, which will already generate poor air quality and dangerous traffic congestion in the village and the rest of the town. The impact of large-scale developments in neighbouring towns cannot be ignored, bordering Badshot Lee's Aldershot, where there will soon be three thousand eight hundred and fifty new homes. In that respect, this will impact congestion in Badshot Lee, where the roads are restricted by patterns of development and the nature of the historic building line. The site has flooded numerous times in the last eighteen months. The strong evidence applied in local residents' objections should not be ignored. The officer's report focuses in part on the analysis of landscape value of the site. However, it is important, it is not in its landscape value, but its separation that provides the Badshot Lee and Webber. The Farnham Design Statement is referred to various times by the applicants in the officer's report. The design statement actually seeks to protect this gap between Webber and Badshot Lee, saying it is vital that the narrow belt of open country, which separates Badshot Lee from Webber, this site, if Badshot Lee is to retain its distinctive community, the essential rural character of Badshot Lee should be preserved by restricting and respecting the pattern of development in the village. Development of the site would cause the coalescence of Badshot Lee and Webber, contrary to the Farnham Design Statement 2010. The officer's report incorrectly states that the site represents an infill site between existing development parts of the village, the village being referred to in this instance is Badshot Lee. This site would actually represent an infill between the two villages of Badshot Lee and Webber. Members are urged to look at the plans on page five of the report to understand the gap between Badshot Lee and Webber, and appreciate the impact that this development would have by merging these two villages. Webber and Badshot Lee, as with many small villages' settlements, are combined as one ward. They are, however, two distinct villages in the same way as Wren Ocean, Shamley Green, or Bacon Hill and Hindhead are. We must protect the individuality of such settlements and seek to enhance the character, not merge them to create larger sprawling settlements, ruining the rural nature of Waverley as a whole. The impression given in the report is that the whole of Farnham should be considered as one development area, as quoted on page eighty-seven. That is not the case. Farnham Town Council represents a large area, but Farnham itself is a cluster of small villages, all of which have their own local neighbourhood centre, and are distinct in terms of character, community, layout, and design. This application seeks to unacceptably extend the development area of Badshot Lee and diminish the gap between the two distinct village settlements. This application should be refused. Failure to refuse this application sets a negative precedent for the whole borough in the protection of small villages. Much is made in recent officer reports, including this one, of the lack of the five-year housing supply in Waverley. Precedent set by the Secretary of State in recent planning appeals proves that although five-years housing supply is an issue for consideration, the absence of a five-year housing supply does not mean that housing development should be permitted anywhere, but only where it amounts to sustainable development, taking account of these and other issues. In conclusion, this site is unsuitable for residential development, and proposals for funds to represent sustainable development in terms of being the most effective way of improving economic, social, and environmental considerations. of improving economic, social and environmental considerations of the wider area. There is no advantage to granting this permission. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ricketts. Now call on the agent, David Neem and Andy Travies. You have five minutes.
Good evening, members. My name's David Neem from Neem Sutton. We're the planning agents for Beale Homes. I'm joined by Mr Travies, who is the drainage engineer for the applicant. Members will note that the application before you for consideration this evening has followed an extensive process of dialogue between the applicant's project team and officers of the Borough Council, County Council, a range of statutory bodies, other consultees and of course consultation with the community. The case officer's report provides you with a comprehensive assessment of the scheme in all respects, and therefore this presentation only focuses on a number of key points. The scheme provides a range of new dwellings, including a substantial proportion of affordable housing, 40%, equating to a total of 56 dwellings. This represents a substantial benefit to those members of the community in desperate need of housing and whose voices are seldom heard in the planning process. The applicant's design team has taken care to ensure that the layout is respectful of its surroundings and creates a neighbourly relationship with existing properties in Glawney Mead and Badshot Park. In fact, the density of the proposals and the levels of separation achieved are not dissimilar to the existing relationships within those neighbouring developments. The site is well-contained, visually enclosed and relates well to the existing settlement. On the matter of drainage, my colleague, Mr Travies, will now provide a summary of the surface water solution.
Up until March 2015, flood risk and drainage were being dealt with by Odyssey Marquedes for the applicant and RPS for Waverley Borough Council with the EA's statutory consultancy. There were three issues in the process of consultation and resolution when we took over the drainage and flood risk assessment. The first being confirmation of flood risk zoning. The whole of the site is at an elevation above the upper flood level for medium flood risk and is therefore in the lowest flood risk zone. This has been reviewed and confirmed by RPS for Waverley Borough Council and referenced in page 53 of the committee report. The capacity of the western ditch along the foot of the railway embankment being the second issue. The surface water drainage strategy for the site comprises interception and collection of surface water runoff from within the site to buried underground storage tanks. The internal site flow from high runoff rates from the site is stored on the site and released by means of regulators set to a naturally occurring greenfield rate into the western ditch, i.e. post-development, the flows will remain the same, discharging to the same point the ditch at the same natural pre-development greenfield rates, so there will be no impact from the development. The existing ditch has the capacity to continue to service the greenfield or match the post-development discharge rates from the site, even with substantial siltation in the ditch. This is confirmed on pages 53 and 54 of the committee report. Respect to groundwater, the third issue. In basic terms, site soils comprise gravel overlying clay. Groundwater can be present within the overlying gravel with a level depending upon the recent rainfall patterns. Any groundwater within the gravel migrates downslope through the voids in the gravel and collects in the western ditch at the foot of the railway embankment. The buried underground tanks draining the proposed development will be sealed from interaction with the groundwater and appropriately detailed. Due to the variability of groundwater level, a drainage solution using soakaways is not possible, as set out in condition 33 of the committee report. WPC's consultant RPS have advocated all finished floor level should be at least 150 millimetres above the surrounding finished ground levels, and this is secured via condition 35. With regards to Lower Wayborne Lane, page 33 of the committee report reflects local concern regarding flooding to the railway bridge. Adjacent to the bridge, the road is cut down into the ground below the level of the adjacent CSET Scar Park, and once the water reaches that level, it simply runs away into Badshot Pond. During the applicant's investigations, the drains to this area, a CCTV survey was undertaken. This found significant siltation. This has been passed over to Thames Water, who are taking responsibility for the existing pipe work in the road.
Just dealing quickly with the matter of highways. The applicant's highway engineer has undertaken extensive work with Surrey County Council in relation to the off-site network that will be affected by the proposal. The officer's report sets out of the detail of the work undertaken, but in essence, the scheme can be accommodated on the surrounding highway network without exceeding its capacity at any point. The introduction of a pedestrian phase at the Badshot Lee Road, Lower Webbern Lane, St George's Road will represent a substantial benefit in terms of highway safety. The proposal before members this evening represents the culmination of an extensive and collaborative planning process with your officers and is considered by the applicant's development team to comprise a high-quality residential development that will make a valuable contribution towards the delivery of new housing in the district. The scheme accords with the MPPF and the relevant save policies in the development plan, and members are therefore respectfully requested to accept the officer recommendation and resolve to grant full detailed planning permission. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Now move to the ward councillor, councillor Nesse.
Thank you, Mr Chairman.
You have four minutes and you may come back after the members have debated the battle.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Chairman. This is all written in percentages and stuff. I mean, I do not believe in that. I normally go to the area, visit it and think how the people are living next to it. Went to the area. That area with the floods and the conditions is a sponge to take all the water in. If they raise, if I see myself, normal person, raise the area and make that area higher, then definitely there's going to be water coming down. Tanks sometimes don't work. What if the water goes down that way? Second thing, as I spoke about the previous dwelling as well, was the schools. Schools are already chock-a-block. They don't have any spaces. People who are living already over there have problems, have to go through their councillors, have to fight the case to get schools locally. The nearest one, they are moving them to Hale. GP has the same problem. I'll give you an example. I wanted an appointment, got hit by a ball in the cricket, and my GP has no appointments either of emergency till two weeks. So that means the GPs are already fully booked and they can't give you an appointment early. If you want to see your own GP, you can't. You have to go in emergency. Traffic. Pollution. If you're blending so many houses, I could feel the pollution every morning when I drop my kids to William Corbett and the traffic jam. And I have to drop two kids in two different schools. I'm always signing every morning, even if I leave quarter past eight, to put them by 9.50 in the school. And this is not going to hurt? I don't believe that. Other thing is that the pollution is definitely higher. I do not believe in these figures which are given to me. I think it's going to destroy the traffic and the pollution and schools and hospitals over there, which is going to be full. Plus, the area face will be totally changed because of that. And the strategic gap in the middle, Aldershot and Farnham, again is going to be destroyed like the last drawings. And I will totally go against it that it should be built. There are other places where it could be built. If we are going to make this area as an urban area, then I think that's not the right idea for it. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, councillor. Members, your turn. Councillor Potts.
Thank you, Chairman. I wonder if I could ask officers to clarify a couple of points for me, please, in relation to the report we're seeing before us tonight. And in no particular order, it may be that I've missed it. There's mention of consultation with Guildford, but there's nothing about Rushmore. And bearing in mind it's very close to the border with Rushmore, I'd be interested to hear what Rushmore had to say as well on the impact. And my other point is, there's a lot talked in here, and the gentleman from the applicant spoke about the assessments that have been done in respect of traffic. What I'd actually like to understand is, and again, I can't find in the report, but maybe I'm missing it. When were the surveys, the traffic surveys undertaken, please? Could I have some details on that? My knowledge of that area and that whole part of North Farnham, I have one of the wards further up, is that I would question a lot that's mentioned in terms of the junction operating within capacity, and I'd like a little bit more detail, please. Thank you.
Catherine or Elizabeth?
Chairman, could we perhaps just have a few minutes to find out that information for you? Thank you.
Councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, the traffic generation figures of, I think it was 87am and 129 or something pm for 140 houses is ridiculous. I don't know where this came from. It's, most people have, most residents have at least one car each, and that's going to be at least 280 cars on that site. That's at least. And everybody goes out in a car once in a day. And I think this traffic generation number is absolutely ludicrous. Moving on, with regard to infrastructure is one of the issues we have here. I think the school locally is already full up at the crossroads, and I'd like to see where these children are going to get their education from. But of course, what they could be, what could happen is they get bussed to a different school, which again generates more traffic. With regard to the site itself, the homes, why are we putting three-story houses here again? We continually coming forward with profit-generating three-story homes. This is a two-story site. It's land beyond the greenbelt. It's a greenfield site. Why are we being so greedy? It should be two-story maximum. Can we have a look at the gap block plan again? With regard to the developed area, it looks almost joined up already there because you've got a road development which seems to go as far as the railway line and stop. So this is the only bit of land between the two areas of build-up. How wide is that area at the top there? Is it about 50 yards or something? Any idea? No? Okay.
Sorry, councillor Edwards, which area is it?
At the top of the red bit there.
Yeah.
How wide is that gap between the two areas of development?
It's the narrowest point.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll find that out for you.
Thank you very much. Now, the applicant has stated that he has consulted with various bodies. This is irrelevant. It's the least they could do, the least they should do. I would expect that anyway from any applicant for a scheme of this size. So emphasising that means nothing to me because they should be doing that as part of the scheme. And I feel for the residents to some extent here because it is a development in a flood plain, on a greenfield site, three-story homes, no, very little infrastructure, very tight. I'm not swayed by this application at all, but I'll listen to the other members. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Edwards. Councillor Holder.
Thank you, Chairman. Could you, there's a lot of mention here on the junction between Lower Wayborne Lane, St George's Road and Badshot Lee. Could you show on this map where this junction is and how it will impact on this development?
The junction concerned is in this position here? Sorry, here. No. Here. There we go. Sorry. Yeah, so this is the main road through to Farnham, through down to the A31 and obviously up into Aldershot and into Farnham this way. It's this junction here.
I think the aerial view might be easier to see it on.
Chairman, a quick factual point in relation to councillor Potts's question. We haven't consulted Rushmore, but we have consulted Guildford, and their response obviously is indicated in the report. Guildford is in the report. Thank you.
Chairman, can I come back a minute, please?
Please do.
Sorry, so Rushmore, as in Aldershot, have not been consulted, but Guildford have. I just find that bit strange, given the impact potentially. Knowing that area, I mean, they're both equidistant, really.
But that's the situation, that we haven't got a response from Rushmore. Neither are actually statutory consultees because the site doesn't abound the boundary. So it isn't, in that sense, critical to your judgment, but you may obviously be asking that question, but that's the simple answer. I'm afraid we don't have that answer for.
Have you got the other answers there, Catherine, this time?
Thank you, Chairman. With regards to your question, councillor Potts, there's a date on the transport assessment of January 2014. I'm just looking through it now to find out when those actual traffic surveys were undertaken. With regards to councillor Holder's question, the gap, the narrowest point of the site across the site frontage there is around 95 metres. Oh, sorry. Sorry, councillor Edwards. 95 metres.
Thank you. Councillor Els.
Thank you, Chairman. I made a site visit yesterday morning along with a lot of my colleagues, and I found it very interesting, and I found a very scruffy area, which, to all intents and purposes, looks as if it wants something doing to it. There is no question about that. But the question is what? And I don't think that we can consider this in a textbook manner. I think we need to be paying attention to what we're hearing from the local residents. And I've said this before in planning meetings. There are no amenities. The school is full. The doctor's, we've heard, is full. It's not sustainable. There are no shops. Local opinion tells us that it floods. We should be listening to that. Is it in flood zone one or is it in flood zone two? Our officers have told us it's in one, but it floods, so what sense does that make? I don't consider this to be nimbyism on the part of the residents of Badshot Lee because we have heard there are two other areas where they would be interested in supporting development. And when I read that 140 extra homes would represent a 25% increase in the population of a village, I do really, I'm minded to think that that is just too much of an increase, in particular with the crossroads in mind. It is a very, very, it does get very congested there. There are parked cars, it's a narrow road on the approach, and I think that to add 25% pressure onto that level of infrastructure would be a mistake. However, somebody may say something which makes me believe otherwise, so I listen with interest.
Sorry, the officers like to come in.
Sorry, Chairman. I just think I probably ought to come back at that point. So I think it's very important for members to remember that difficult as this is, you are not conducting a local plan-type site sifting exercise at this stage. You are assessing a single planning application, so it really isn't appropriate, I'm afraid, to reject this site because there may be other sites that are preferred by the community. Now, I know that's a difficult one. I know the community want that conclusion to be reached, but in fairness to the applicants, they have made a planning application and are asking you to assess it on its own individual merits against the criteria that we've set out for you. you and the considerations that we've set out, many of those of which are judgments. And you may form a view on its merits that you don't like it, but it, I'm afraid, is not reasonable for you to say, we don't want this one because we want another one. Because that's the sort of process you'll be going through with the local plan. It isn't the process you go through, I'm afraid, on a single planning application. And the other point, I would say, in relation to a textbook analysis, of course, many of these considerations are technical matters which require you to adopt quite a technical approach. Now, none of us are experts on flood risk or highways, and that's why we looked to the experts, to advisers. And as I said at the beginning, we have taken a long time to try and unravel some of these difficult issues with the applicants. And the conclusions that have been reached are now satisfactory. And it's not about whether the site floods at the moment or whether we think it might flood in the future. The test from the MPPF is can the applicants design this in a way to make it safe for the occupiers and to mean it will not be unsafe for residents surrounding the site? They're two simple tests with a lot of technical analyses round it. And they have satisfied the experts in that way, that it is safe in flood risk terms. So I just thought it was worth highlighting those two quite important points at this point in the debate. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Please do.
May I just come back? May I just say that I really just wanted to point out that, from my point of view, it would be very easy to dismiss what local people are telling us as nimbyism. And I just wanted to point out that I don't feel that that is the case here. If I don't mention the other sites, then I still hold that this is not nimbyism. And I think there are some very good reasons for it not to go ahead. Thank you. But thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you, councillor Els. Councillor McLeod.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm afraid some of what I'm going to say goes against what Elizabeth has just told us, but I'm going to say it anyway. To me, this, I'll make the introductory comment, it's not the fault of the local community that there isn't a existing local plan, a neighbourhood plan, but there is an emerging neighbourhood plan and this site is not part of it within the Farnham neighbourhood plan. In fact, it's a site that was rejected in the emerging Farnham neighbourhood plan. But to go back to my prepared remarks, to me, this application represents an enormous personal example of what is going wrong with the current planning system. Building new homes is vitally important, but in an era of supposed localism, planning should respect the views and aspirations of the local community. That is not what is happening here. Bagshot Lee is a relatively small village within Farnham of around 600 houses with a strong community identity, but with limited local facilities and amenities. The Community Association has recognised that some planned and controlled expansion could be of benefit to the village, as well as making a contribution to housing need in the Farnham area generally. They have reviewed seven potential new housing sites and identified those which would be most beneficial to the development of the village. They have taken a highly active part in the development of the emerging Farnham neighbourhood plan and the new local plan. This is surely localism, not to mention the Prime Minister's big society in action, where dozens of local people have put in hundreds of hours of voluntary activity to try to ensure that their community is developed in the right way. The key thing about this site, it is seen by the local community as the least desirable for housing development for a whole series of reasons. It is an unwanted and unnecessary development in Bagshot Lee and does not fit in with the community's vision for the development of their village. It is in the wrong place in terms of the cohesive development of the village and would lead to merging of the Bagshot Lee and Wayborne villages. In itself, very much as councillor Els said, it would represent a 25% expansion of the village, thus largely precluding far more desirable developments for some considerable time. The post-plan is due to represent an overdevelopment and an overcrowded site. The infrastructure of the village and the local road system, which is prone to flooding, cannot cope with such a large development. Despite what we are told about the five-year, lack of a five-year housing supply, we have no obligation whatsoever to allow this development. The MPPS states in its core planning principles that development should be genuinely plan-led, empowering local people to shape their surroundings with succinct local neighbourhood plans, setting out a positive vision for the area. This development seemed to be the exact opposite. It is not part of any overall plan. It is inappropriate, opportunistic, and it actually denies local people the opportunity to shape their surroundings. This is reflected in the large number of objections made by the local people to this application, 249 from a village with just around 600 houses. I would also like to comment on some wider issues in relation to this application. Allowing this application would take up a large proportion of the remaining sangs at Farnham Park, thus precluding far more desirable developments, particularly the largest wool mead brownfield development in central Farnham. The officers referred in the local plan public consultation, to the local plan public consultation on page 12 of the report, without mentioning that by far the most significant outcome of that consultation was that 80% of the respondents wanted to see brownfield development, in particular at Dunful Park, rather than greenfield development across the borough. Surely we should be taking notice of what our wider community think when we make planning decisions. A related point is that the proposed development lies within five kilometres of the Thames Basin Hees Spa, where we should be avoiding development if alternative sites are available elsewhere. There would seem to be plenty of other sites available elsewhere, particularly if Dunful Park becomes available, but we are still pursuing a mitigation strategy, which we can fusion and refer to as an avoidance strategy. I have to say finally that I have never really understood the rather complex arguments referred to by some objectors about why waveless policies in this area are allegedly legal. But now that I'm a small part of the decision-taking process, I am becoming concerned about whether or not this mitigation strategy actually works. As I understand it, we are required to be satisfied when taking decisions that this is the case. And thus I would like to ask the officers if there is clear evidence that this mitigation strategy actually works. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Blackdon, I'll come back to the officers after that. Councillor Blackdon.
With respect to the officers and anybody else concerned, I don't like this application at all. I think it's in the wrong place and I think it is too, has too high a density. I don't think the infrastructure has been thought through at all. We're always worried about roads, but that is only part of the problem. Okay, they're going to have to deal a lot with sewage because the surface water tends to get into sewers as well. So we've got to be rather careful of that. The next thing is that they've, we still need more schools in this area. And there's been no effort to put a school of any size in this new development. It is the same thing with GP's facilities. That has been omitted as well, or has not been considered because of the various types of housing. There is only one access to this whole site. There isn't an access to the south, there's only somewhere up there to the north. And I think that this, as far as I'm concerned, is unsafe for reasons that I have spoken many times to the officers about. So all in all, the other thing that worries me immensely is that this is a very good jumping-off platform for further development in this area. Because if they say, okay, fine, it's easy, we don't need to worry too much about this because nobody really cares, then to the south and to the north, there will always be further development. Because this is the kind of greenfield site that developers like very much. Developers don't like brownfield sites because the, whatever the programme is or the project is, the ground, the brownfield site has got to be cleared. And this costs money. So it makes life a bit more expensive for everybody. In other words, I don't think this, I don't think this particular proposal will work. Or else it will create a monster and leads to further, in, to further housing in an area that could do well without at this particular stage and coalesce the two parts of, to the east and the west. And that is another thing we don't want, not only lack of the strategic gap, which is mostly to the north. So I'm sorry, I don't like this at all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, this is quite a tricky one, but it is undoubtedly in the strategic gap. This is undoubtedly a green corridor between the two areas of Wayborne and Bagshot Lee. You can see that, the, being in the spa, that Fauna and Canflora can pass through that gap to the south and to the north. I think it, strategic gap is a key factor in this decision. Likewise, the sang. I would have expected a development of this size to put forward its own sang, quite frankly. Many other areas have done so with similar-sized developments. And to suggest that, you know, they should absorb a large part of Farnham Park, I think is undoubtedly selfish. I take councillor Edwards' comments on three stories, I think, again, yes, right, there should only be two stories here. I don't think there is enough parking in, on the site. I see that 316 cars is fairly low for 140 houses in this area, which is totally reliant on motor vehicles. There are a few buses, but they're not particularly reliable. So there should be more parking. And finally, I think the overall S106 contribution is rather mean. Recent other applications which we've passed have produced double that amount in, for this number of houses. And that would obviously make a much better contribution towards infrastructure. So I hear what the officers say, but I'm afraid in practice I'm not in favour of this development.
Thank you, councillor Adams. Elizabeth.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to come back on a couple of things, just to clarify. A couple of members have raised concern about the impact on local schools. And I'm sure you'll be aware that a development of this site could not on its own be required to provide a primary school. So the next best thing you can do is require the applicants to make a contribution towards education, which is then spent responsibly on justified projects by the educational authority. And that is what has happened. And the report details that. So I would advise against finding fault with the application on education grounds. I realise the difficulties in, currently in driving children to school and distances and pressure on schools, but clearly that is the statutory responsibility of the educational authority to make sure that there's adequate provision. So the most you can do as planning authority is to ask for that money to facilitate responding to that impact. The other, another query was about whether the SPA and the sang situation works and whether or not it's been fair for a development of this site to take up some of the Farnham Park space. That may be a consideration. And members should be aware that we've actively encouraged greenfield developments to, where they can and where they've got land available to them, provide their own sang if they can. But, and some of course have, for example, at Crandall Lane, they bought into sang further away from the borough. And in Hazelmead, they provided their own sang. In this particular instance, the applicants haven't been able to do that, but it would, I think, be unreasonable to find against them because they are buying into Farnham Park. Because your avoidance strategy doesn't discriminate against brownfield or greenfield, nor does it say that where it's a greenfield site, it can't have any part of Farnham Park. So I would advise against finding fault on that ground. There is capacity left for them and they have completed that legal agreement to make that contribution. And there was one other point. Yes, sorry, coming back to councillor Potts's question about the date upon which the highway surveys were carried out. You'll see in the report on page 48 that we've tried to provide relevant information about when, in terms of the time of day, the surveys were carried out. We haven't quoted the actual day there. We've looked as far as we can in the documentation that we have as to when precisely the day it was carried out. I'm afraid we cannot lay our hands on that. I have to say, it might have been helpful to have warning of that question. Perhaps if we'd had a little bit more time, we could have found it for you. It probably is there, but we have a lot of information here. But nevertheless, we're trying to find it for you. But I would say to the chairman, if it's that critical, you may want to use your discretion perhaps to ask the applicants that particular point, the date upon which the survey information was collected. But of course, that is your judgement, Chairman. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you. I'd just look to see if the agent is able to supply that information. A conventional weekday. Thank you very much indeed. First of all, councillor Byrne.
Thank you. Well, it's been an interesting debate and some interesting presentations by both the objectors and the applicant and his drainage engineer. I arrived at this site and looked and said, I love the term greenfield site. It wasn't very green at all. It was more plastic, actually, there was so much. But I don't know who we were blamed for that particular situation. It's perhaps unfair to comment on that in a way, but it is not in any way the most attractive greenfield site that I've ever seen in comparison to perhaps the one that we passed a couple of weeks ago in Cranley, which was beautiful. But nevertheless, it was in a similar, in fact, it was in a better situation than this. It was sitting alongside a railway line which was defunct. Here we have it sitting alongside the railway line and a long strip and it joins into the village. Now, I understand and I recognise that it is a small village and therefore it will add considerably to the number of residents within that village, without understanding exactly where all the schools are or whatever, where the doctor's surgery is. For instance, does Bagshot Lee have its own doctor's surgery or do they go to Wayborne or wherever? When I came out of that site, I wanted to go to the centre of Farnham. I had a particular thing in mind. I didn't know, actually, I'd looked at the map. I went out, turned left and found myself very quickly into the centre of Farnham. And I think that's most likely route of people driving away from that site, either the transport links or whatever, that they would perhaps turn left rather than head towards the crossroads that people, the traffic lines that people can drive. So overall, I feel it appeared to me, and I recognise the numbers are difficult for people, especially with regard to the sang, but overall, I'm supportive of the application and the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor Stenner.
Thank you, Chairman. Yet again, we sit here on the JPC. We're now talking about raised floors, yet they say it doesn't flood. Infrastructure. Schools are full up. The hogsback. It's absolutely chock-a on a working day coming across, if you want to get across there from half-past seven to nine o'clock. I agree with councillor Adams here. The money that's coming from this development for infrastructure is very poor. And we seem to be going nowhere with this, just greedy developers just wanting to put more houses, more money, more profit, and not putting money back into the system. We cannot keep allowing this because it's, it's just not on. Councillor Byham referred to the Cranley site. That, in actual fact, had drainage that could cope with it. We didn't have raised floors. And I just am amazed, and I'm sorry if it sounds offensive, but with common sense, raising floors, we'd be living on stilts next like Thailand. Thank you.
Thank you.
councillor McLeod.
Thank you, Chairman, for allowing me to come back. But just to say, I don't think I actually got an answer to my question about whether there's clear evidence that the mitigation strategy actually works, if I could ask Elizabeth to address that point, if she would. Thank you.
Elizabeth.
Thank you, Chairman. I apologise, because I remembered that you wanted an answer there, and I forgot about it. I do apologise. I think the answer to your question is, of course, councillor McLeod, that we do have an avoidance strategy which has been approved by Natural England as a statutory consultee in relation to impact upon the SPA. And that is the council's policy. That is what you have signed up to in terms of understanding that if you approve housing development in the five kilometre buffer zone, then it will successfully avoid a likely significant effect upon the special interest of the SPA. So there is doubt and there is concern, I know, from a number of parties about whether or not the policy is working. And Natural England, in conjunction with other bodies, of course, is looking at the effectiveness of the policy in a number of ways. But for purposes of the planning application, that is the policy that has been signed up to by the council, and it has been accepted in terms of the delivery framework as being an acceptable means of avoiding the impact. And therefore, that's, I'm afraid, the best that I can advise you, that you can have confidence that you are passing your statutory obligations under the Habitat Regulations if you accept payment in lieu of Farnham Park. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. councillor Adams.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Firstly, could I thank the officers for a very good, comprehensive report and a very worthwhile site visit yesterday. I note from councillor Byam, he mentioned a JPC meeting last week when we considered an application in Cranley. It was for 149 houses, as opposed to the 140 in this application. I have to say that in both instances, both last week and this week, I do have a very great sympathy with our planning officers, who are, for the most part, it does seem to me, very much limited and driven by our lack of a five-year housing supply land and the NPPF that drives with a presumption in favour of sustainable development. I have a great deal of sympathy with the 246 or possibly more local residents adjacent to this application site, who have taken the trouble to write in to Waverley, expressing their concern about it and indeed objection as well. But then I'm minded, of course, that planning is not a democratic process. It is quasi-legal, and planning applications are not actually determined by the weight of local public opinion. Would perhaps that it was. But I wonder if we might turn the slides back to the determining issues, please. I think the ones with the policy and... And I look at that list of matters of principle and matters of judgment, and perhaps if I exclude the effect on Thames Basin Heath's SPA and the strategic gap, there is not much different with those two lists as there was with the two lists that prevailed for the application determined by this committee last week. And whilst I've listened to all that has been said, I have to say that, given the result of last week's joint planning committee, I'm puzzled really why, overall, members have spoken in the opposite direction. We were advised last week that if Cranley accepted the additional 149 houses that was required with that planning application, then we would have made our contribution, and perhaps we needed to worry a lot less about other potential development within Cranley itself. And whilst I've listened to this debate, I have to say that I remain unconvinced about flood risk. The Environment Agency does not seem to support that view. I hear Mr Stenit there suggesting that perhaps raising floor levels by about 150 millimetres, which to my mind is probably around about seven, seven and a half inches. I look around at my house, and the floor level is quite possibly a little more than that. So I don't really see that there is too much difference in actually raising floor levels above the surrounding land. Highways, access, parking, the same arguments were posed last week. Infrastructure, again, it was the same arguments proposed last week as well. Residential amenity, affordable housing, housing mix. I suppose I sit in a situation where, having listened to the debate and heard opposing views compared with last week's debate, and I ask myself really, what is the difference? Because, quite frankly, having read a very, very comprehensive and accurate report and listened to various public speakers and my fellow members on this committee, I am at the moment minded to support the officer's recommendation. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, councillor. Coming back to councillor Edwards, you wanted to come back.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Yeah, can we keep those determining issues up there, which is what councillor Adams made a very good, some very good points there. The only issues I have, looking at that now, is the strategic gap and the visual impact with three-storey buildings. I have a feeling that if we turn this down, it will get granted on appeal. We are in a difficult position because of the housing supply figure and lack of a local plan, which, you know, seems to go on forever. And I think I'm swayed in favour of the applicants at this moment in time, but I'm not happy about, can we please say to developers, you know, land beyond the Green Belt, it should be two stories. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Adams.
Thank you for letting me come back. Just a very quick remark, really. I take what has been said before about the meanness of the contributions. I see the transport improvements £50,000. And it just occurs to me that in my village, we had a pedestrian crossing, and that cost £75,000. I'm not quite sure what £50,000 can possibly do to improve the traffic situation there. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. councillor Blackdon.
I apologise, I've got to nitpick on one particular matter, and that is the sangs. We've got to the stage now where there's not much left in Farnham Park. And to my mind, this should be dedicated or kept in reserve for the buildings that are being developed on brownfield sites, because they naturally have no sang capability of themselves. The other thing is that we've now got to the stage where, for one particular recent application, the sang was going to be in Church Crookham. So if your dog felt it needed to go to the loo, you put it in the back of the car and drive 12 miles and wait till the dog has done whatever it had to, and then drive 12 miles back. I'm awfully sorry, but I don't think that would work either. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, councillor. If there are no other speakers, I will return to councillor Nezzy.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. What my other colleagues, my fellow consulmen have said enough, I'm just going to say a simple word. This is not the end. This is going to be the beginning of encroachments, that I would like to say. And I'm sorry, pardon me, but this is what I think. This is the start of it, of the areas which are going to be covered. This is not going to stop over here. There will be other companies who will be coming in for doing that. School-wise, I have not repeated that. My other fellow consulmen have repeated that. School, William Corbett, which is near, is building day by day other places for classes, but they are at a level that they can't build because their fields will be gone for the sports and everything. And they are building the Farnham building. I have spoken with the principal, with the head teacher over there, that how long we could keep on building regarding filling in the spaces. I mean, until, and the GPs have the same problem. How are they going to put more GPs in there when there's no space for it? All rooms are filled, they are using them, they don't have appointments or anything. So where should we go from there? We're going to build these houses, three-storey or two-storey. It's going to be an area which is green, which is taking the water from other spaces. If it's higher than other spaces, it's just going to be like a waterfall. It's a simple theory of gravity. It's going to come down to the houses which people are living over there. I rest my case after that. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, councillor. Sorry, I should have come back to you earlier on.
Are you okay, Chairman? Thank you. I have got certain reservations about this planning application. I also come from a small village, so I do understand some concerns here. This is a lot of building on quite a tight site. You can get it in there, I can see that. And there are lots of things that I would like to flag up. In particular, it is a small village, it is a very small village, and I understand there are 550 houses there. We're now going to add another 140. And as fantastic as it is that we should have all those affordable housing, that's a tremendous opportunity. But I think overall, to subject the local community to such a big build, 550 houses there now, and to be asking for another 140, I think that's a big ask. And I think that will be harmful to the community, not to mention the knock-on effects. We know that the primary school is full to capacity at the moment. And I know, as a villager myself, that it's sometimes necessary to travel, to go to the doctors, the dentists, the candlestick makers, of course it is. But the undue pressures that could be imposed on this community, wanting a development such as this, I think would be quite harmful. For those reasons, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much. Do the officers wish to come in at this time? Elizabeth.
I think we've picked up on all the points we felt we needed to. So thank you for that opportunity, Chairman, but nothing further to add. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further comments, we will move to the recommendation, the revised recommendation, which is on the update report, that, subject to the completion of a section 106 agreement to secure 40% affordable housing, infrastructure contributions, including early years learning, secondary education, environmental improvements and transport improvements, off-site highways works, and for the setting up of a management company to manage on-site play space, open space and SUDs, permission be granted, subject to the conditions 1 to 35 on pages 74 to 86 on the agenda, and informatives 1 to 18 on pages 86 to 88. Can I have a show of hands, those in favour of the recommendation, please? Thank you. Those against? Any abstentions?
One abstention.
Can I have a proposal for an alternative recommendation, please, in a second, before we move on to the vote? councillor Potts.
Can I suggest the effect on the actual villages of Weyborne and Badshotley and the effect on the strategic gap, the density of the development, the sustainability of the site? And I know I'm not an expert, but I'm sorry, with the local knowledge that I have, I'm very concerned about the traffic report and the traffic recommendations as well. I do not, I think traffic is a real issue, and I don't think that has been addressed correctly either. I would like to ask as well, can we make a comment about our concerns about the 106 contribution?
Thank you, Chairman. If I could start with the 106 contributions. I think it's important to remember that, as the report sets out, the guidance on contributions from government is quite clear, that any contributions that you seek in relation to a development need to pass the test, the SIL tests, that they be reasonable, they be justified, they be relevant, they be directly related, and that now, since April, that the infrastructure provider can argue that they haven't already pooled more than five contributions for one piece of infrastructure. So the tests are very tough for us as a planning authority in terms of asking for contributions. That is challenging for us. We don't have SIL at the moment, and going forward, we will have SIL. But that's where we are at the moment, since April. So we're in a different place to where we were pre-April, and we're not as able to freely ask for contributions based on the old calculator. It's much more scientific than that now. So these contributions have been through the process of negotiation, the infrastructure providers, bearing in mind those tests have actually had to be clear about what they can ask for and what they can justify. We're just the messengers here, asking the infrastructure providers, what do you feel you can ask for, and can you be clear about it? So the short answer is I would recommend you stick with what has been required, rather than seeking to up it. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. councillor Potts.
Thank you, Chairman. If I may come back. Thank you, Elizabeth. I just think it's a great shame when, you know, we see this happening. But I think you're right, if we're likely to face an inspector, and it is likely that we will, we need to make sure that we've got some very firm grounds. I think also we need to look at sang, and that needs to be mentioned as well. So if we could please look at the effect on the spa and sang, that I think is also, that gives us, I think, one, two, three, four, five. I think that's enough. Thank you.
councillor.
Can we also mention that restrict the height of the buildings to two stories, not three?
Thank you, Chairman. In terms of the last point raised, because you are seeking to refuse it, you would not be recommending to put a condition on to seek the height to be two stories. I suggest you make a comment in your reason for refusal that you think the height is too great as part of the impact, and that will get wrapped up with the concern you're raising. Some of the suggestions, most of the suggestions that have come forward and picking up from the debate are on visual grounds. So if you are in agreement, we would suggest a reason for refusal, wrapping up those visual concerns. And, yes, I'm going to ask Catherine to read out a draft reason for refusal, wrap that up, because she's just knocked it together, to see whether, in terms of height, density and the location of the site and the impact on coalescence, whether this captures what the committee are concerned about. Thank you.
Catherine.
Thank you, Chairman. The first reason...
The first reason, from what I gather, would be a countryside character reason. So the proposal by virtue of the number of dwellings, scale, urbanising impact and harm to the landscape character would cause material detrimental harm to the character and setting of the existing settlement and the intrinsic character, beauty and openness of the countryside, contrary to policies C2, D1 and D4 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan, paragraph 17 of the NPPF. The adverse impact would significantly and demonstrably outweigh the benefits of the proposal when assessed against the policies of the NPPF taken as a whole. So that's your countryside reason that you've expressed. With regards to the specific harm that you have identified to the Farnham and Aldershot strategic gap and the coalescence of Webber and Badshot Lee, officers would suggest along the lines, the application site lies within the Farnham/Aldershot strategic gap where policy C4 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan seeks its protection from inappropriate development. The proposal by reason of its scale and degree of encroachment into the open countryside would result in a significant coalescence of Farnham and Aldershot and the villages of Webber and Badshot Lee and would fail to promote the enhancement of the landscape. The proposal would be contrary to policy C4 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan and the NPPF. You've also expressed some concerns with regards to infrastructure. I would suggest along the lines, the applicant has failed to enter into an appropriate legal agreement to secure contributions towards early years and secondary education, highway improvements, environmental improvements and therefore the proposal conflicts with policies D13 and D14 of the local plan. Also, the agreement would need to secure affordable housing, which is not done if the agreement isn't signed. Notwithstanding the objection in principle to the proposal under reason for refusal one and taking into account the absence of a signed legal agreement, the proposal would fail to provide affordable housing within the meaning of the NPPF appropriate to meet Waverley Borough Council's housing need. And finally, your visual overdevelopment concerns that you have expressed, I would suggest along the lines, the proposal by reason of the layout, density and height of the development would cause material harm to the character and appearance of the area, contrary to policies D1 and D4 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan 2002, the Farnham Design Statement 2010 and the NPPF 2012. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Sorry, just to add to that, Chairman, I think therefore you've got five reasons for refusal. I would strongly advise you do not refuse this on the basis of impact on the SPA. I do understand your concerns, but for the reasons that I said before, I think that we would be found to be quite unreasonable to take that approach. And the other concern you had was in relation to traffic. And we do understand the concerns members have and the community have in relation to traffic, but as I said at the beginning of the meeting, as you've heard me say on many occasions, this is a technical matter. The applicants have carried out what the NPPF requires them to do. They've carried out the studies, they've modelled the work and they have provided the necessary mitigation that your statutory consultee requires them to do to overcome any impact. So they have ticked that box. And I think although we're still recommending that it's unsatisfactory because there's no signed agreement, so that is a concern. But once the agreement is signed going forward to an appeal, that objection would fall away. But there would be an opportunity, any forthcoming appeal for any concerns about impact on traffic still to be expressed to an inspector. But I would advise, bearing in mind where we are, that you do not refuse this on traffic and transport. That's just my advice. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Councillor Edward, do you want to...
Yeah, thank you. Can I ask you, Elizabeth, whether there be any mileage in the... Because there is concern about the ingress and egress onto the site because there's only one entrance and really, for 140 homes, I mean, it's going to be very tight.
Thank you, Chairman. I think that's probably more of a design, layout and visual concern rather than a safety matter. So if you're concerned that for the viewpoint of connectivity and permeability of the site, the two sort of design words, but in terms of the way it's laid out and connected to the settlement, that your preference would be for other access points to be achieved, although I think the applicants have looked carefully at that and it hasn't been an easy obstacle for them to overcome, but if you have an outstanding concern that with there just being a single access point, I suggest that you include that within your visual reason number three, number five, of which expresses concern about the number of dwellings on the site, the overdevelopment, and it could include a comment about including the provision of a single access point, and that would be covered. I think that would be more reasonable than having an objection on the basis of highway safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor MacLeod.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a question in relation to the size point, the size of the development. Would it be appropriate to talk about the percentage that this would represent, a 25% increase in the size of the village? And that just seems rather too large. Is that an appropriate point to make or not?
Thank you, Chairman. I think that point probably comes under the overdevelopment argument, that you think it's too many dwellings in relation to its location and size relative to the remainder of the settlement. But we take that point and going forward, if an appeal is lodged, we can expand on that point as part of the evidence on your behalf. Thank you.
Councillor Ellis.
Thank you, Chairman. Purely on a point of procedure, the committee has just voted not to support the officer's recommendation for approval. And we have just listened to rehearsal for reasons perhaps that might result in a refusal. But shouldn't we have at least a proposal to refuse and maybe a secondary as well? Thank you.
That's what I'm waiting for. Thank you. Councillor Potts, are you proposing?
Chairman, thank you. I'm proposing to a refusal of the application and I have a secondary. Thank you.
I'm pleased to second, Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. Councillor Ellis, sorry.
I just wanted to say, we've not mentioned, and perhaps there's a reason for it, and Elizabeth will tell us no doubt if there is this, we haven't mentioned sustainability. We said, several comments were made about the fact that the site isn't sustainable.
Catherine?
Chairman, if I may. Councillor Ellis, the officer's advice would be that you include reasons of sustainability in your first reason for refusal, which is the location of the development within the countryside. So Chairman, we would request that we insert that for you.
We have a proposal which is seconded to refuse. Do you wish to hear the five cases again, members?
No.
No? In that case, we have a proposal to refuse this application from councillor Potts and seconded by councillor Ellis. Can I have those in favour of refusal? Please show.
Ten in favour of refusing.
Those against? Abstentions?
Two.
Thank you. The application is therefore refused. Thank you very much indeed.